So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the May 9, 2023, meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Chambers, if she would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Let us pray. "Gracious God, our Father, we come to you right now in the name of Jesus. Lord, we come honoring you and acknowledging who you are. We don't come because it's on the agenda, but we come because we recognize that you are the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. And so, we honor you and we acknowledge you before any business is done, Lord. Father, we confessing that we don't know all the answers. Father, none of us are coming to you because we've done everything right. But we come to you, Lord, knowing that you are right, that you know all, and you rule all, and you see all. And so, we thank you for the opportunity to gather, to carry out the business that is before this board. Lord, I thank you for the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners and all the work that they do. I thank you for the way that they have led and the way that they will lead. Lord, I pray for them individually, collectively. I pray, Father, that you would perfect everything that concerns them. And I pray, Lord, that as they carry out the business before this board this morning, that you would grant them wisdom, that you would grant them understanding. I pray that you would strengthen them in every area of their life, that as they serve the people, they serve you. Now bless everything that shall happen today, and may it all be done for your glory, and in decency and in honor to bless this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
..............................................................................
So, thank you Pastor Chambers. And Pastor Chambers comes to us today from the Calvert County Baptist Church. We do appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve and adopt, excuse me, approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second? I have motion second that we approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public service announcements, there are a couple. Today is Chalk the Walk Day. Chalk the Walk, if you don't know, is to recognize Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. So, there were some public events this week scheduled through May 8 through the 13th at all Calvert County libraries, at the Calvert Health Medical Center, and at the Calvert County Behavioral Health locations. And today, from 2:00 to 4:00, there's an event at the Community Resources Building at 30 Duke Street here in Prince Frederick. Also, we are celebrating Business Appreciation Week. In Calvert County, we have lots of wonderful small businesses that help contribute to the community, provide services, and this is our opportunity to show our appreciation for what they do. So, there were events started yesterday. This afternoon, we, as commissioners, will be out touring around many different businesses throughout Calvert County. But whenever you're in a local business, we want you to thank them. You know, sometimes it's not easy operating a small business, no matter where you are. But today, there are certainly challenges for everybody, and we want to thank our businesses for maintaining the services that they provide here in Calvert County. It's also National Teachers Appreciation Week, and we certainly appreciate all the work that our teachers do, helping to educate our children and the service that they provide to the community. I believe that's all I have for today. So, that will bring us to proclamations. We have lots of proclamations today. The first one is National Travel and Tourism Week. Commissioner Ireland.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would, everybody that's involved in this proclamation, please come forward, state your name, and once you introduce yourself, say what you'd like to say. Please come up front.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Hillary Daly. I'm the Tourism Program Specialist for Calvert County. My job is to promote all the great things there are to see and do here in Calvert County, so people come visit for a little bit and basically leave their money here. We want them to spend their money here. Spend their money in our locally-owned restaurants and shops. Spend their money in our art galleries and museum shops. Then they can go back home with a pocketful of memories. The money visitors bring in is brand-new money, flowing directly into our local economy. It cushions our tax base here in Calvert County. It's tax money that Calvert County residents do not have to pay. In fact, visitors to Calvert County and across the state of Maryland save every Maryland household approximately $1,000 in taxes every year by leaving their money behind when they leave a destination. Another important factor of Calvert County tourism is supporting and connecting our attractions and businesses, like restaurants, charter boats, galleries, parks, antique stores, farmers' markets, ice cream shops, and more, because these places make it fun to live here in Calvert County. Our quality of life as Calvert County residents is enhanced by what we have here. Today, we are celebrating National Travel and Tourism Week. Established in 1983, Travel and Tourism Week is an annual tradition to celebrate the United States travel community and tourism's essential role in stimulating economic growth, cultivating vibrant communities, creating job opportunities, and elevating the quality of life for residents in these communities. To celebrate the importance of this week in Calvert County, we'll be highlighting some of Calvert County's anchor attractions in a social media campaign, offering the public a scavenger hunt with prizes that we developed with the Department of Communications and Media Relations, and we will be presenting small tokens of appreciation with handwritten thank-you notes to the small and hard-working staff at our Calvert County hotels. Additionally, I've asked Sarah Frey, Tourism Assistant, Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development, and several of my colleagues, who I consider friends, that represent some of our anchor attractions, tourism businesses, and organizations in Calvert County, to come accept this proclamation. Please come forward, state your name, and who you represent.
Good morning. I'm Gwen Novak with No Time to Cook in Solomons.
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Farmer with Calvert Marine Museum.
Morning. I'm Jeff Murray with the Calvert Marine Museum in Solomons.
Rod Cofield, Jefferson Patterson Park and Museum.
Dawn Richardson, the town of North Beach.
Good morning. Corinne Moore with the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum.
Good morning. Joseph Davis with the Arts Council of Calvert County and the Calvert Gallery.
Hi. Vanellope Castro with the Spring Hill Suites in Prince Frederick.
Stacy Honruff from Anne-Marie Sculpture Garden and Art Center in Solomons.
Good morning. Sarah Frey, Tourism Program Assistant, Economic Development.
Good morning. Miriam Gold from the American Chestnut Land Trust.
Carla Richard with the Chesapeake Beach Water Park.
Good morning, everyone. Larry Jaworski, Vice President of Town Council, Tunnel Chesapeake Beach, and Chair of the County Economic Development Advisory Commission.
Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development, and I'm so happy to see so many of our attractions here today.
One more.
One more coming.
Mary Lynn. I'm the Rod and Will Resort.
Kathy, are you coming up? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. I'm going to read the proclamation. This is Business Appreciation Week, and I believe we have a busy day scheduled ahead of us, correct? Okay, here we go. Whereas the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, has been designated as National Travel and Tourism Week, whereas the national or travel industry supports millions of Americans and jobs as one of the largest private sector employers in the United States and provides travelers with countless benefits by helping families create memories, connecting communities, and enriching people's lives. Whereas, travel to and within Maryland has historically provided significant economic benefits for the state as we emerged from the pandemic, generating $26.4 billion in both indirect and induced economic impacts, and $2.1 billion in state and local tax revenues in the state of Maryland. And whereas, travel positively affects Calvert County's economic prosperity and image, tourism improved the local economy by providing $76.2 million in labor income, 1,622 jobs in Calvert County, at $5.7 million in sales and use taxes. And whereas, the tourism industry suffered significant setbacks due to the effects of the pandemic, but our sites, attractions, hotels, restaurants, and the workforce that support them remain committed to a strong and enthusiastic comeback in 2022, continuing into 2023. Welcoming visitors from near and far to enjoy Calvert County and spend their money and local businesses to support our tax base has always been and always will be the enduring character of the travel industry in Calvert County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May 7 through 13, 2023 be known as National Travel and Tourism Week in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all citizens to join in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in our community, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of May 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you.
Perfect.
So, our next proclamation is for National Safe Boating Week. Commissioner Ireland.
Mr. Smith, I know you're here for this. Okay, if you would, please step up to the microphone, introduce yourselves, and tell us a little bit about yourselves and your organization, and then step forward, please, sir.
My name is Bill Smith. I'm with the Coast Guard Auxiliary, Flotilla 2306, Drum Point. As the Auxiliary is a civilian, uniformed, all-volunteer organization of over 21,000 men and women like you who support the Coast Guard, ensure boating safety to the general public. We can safety, go on safety patrols, often joining the Coast Guard. We are watch standards, cooks at Coast Guard stations, and do free vessel safety checks. We also teach boating safety. The Division, the Fifth Southern Division, covers 74 flotillas, 15 divisions in Maryland, Virginia, and North Carolina. I'd like to introduce my member here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ginger Sour. I'm also with Coast Guard Auxiliary, 23, Flotilla 2306, and I've been with them for almost 25 years now. And it's a great organization. It really is. God bless.
Anybody else? So, I've known Mr. Smith for a lot of years. You look up volunteering in the dictionary, his picture is there, next to it. How many years were at the sheriff's office, Mr. Smith? 10 years. How many days a week?
About three a week.
Three days a week. Do the math. He spent a lot of time volunteering at the sheriff's office. He's a great man. In addition to the Coast Guard Auxiliary, you see him, he's very involved in the community, great, great person. And Ms. Sauer would say the same about you, but I don't know anything about you. But thank you for being here.
She's a great volunteer, too.
But, no, I've actually seen Mr. Smith out and about in the water, and, you know, we exchange our waves, and, like I said, we appreciate what you do. And we're going to read this proclamation. Whereas, the National Safe Boating Council's Safe Boating Campaign is a worldwide effort focused on responsible boating. The campaign encourages boaters to always wear a life jacket while on the water. When selecting a life jacket, a boater should ensure that it's U.S. Coast Guard-approved for the water activity and that it fits properly. And whereas, although boating is an excellent source of recreation, it can be a dangerous activity. Every year, individuals lose their lives in boating-related accidents in the United States. Most of these fatalities are not caused by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, but by human error or poor judgment. And whereas, boating advocates recommend that all boaters and passengers always wear a life jacket while boating regardless of their age or experience level. Data shows that 86% of reported drownings occurred when the person was not wearing a life jacket. The U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary offers free vessel safety checks to make sure all essential equipment is present and working in good condition. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May 20 through 26, 2023, be known as National Safe Boating Week in Calvert County to promote safe and smart boating year-round. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we urge all citizens to wear it while boating, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of May 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Okay, so she just said she was a nurse for 56 years, folks. So, give her a round of applause for that, and we did learn something about her.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a boat.
Thank you so much.
It's a hunting boat. It's a boat.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
So, the next proclamation is for National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have anybody here?
I think we do.
For detention center? Good morning, guys.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Major T.D. Reese, the Administrator of the Detention Center. I want to thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedule to recognize National Correctional Officer and Employee Week. We appreciate any recognition we get outside of the concrete and steel walls we work behind all the time. But I want to, you know, take this opportunity just to thank all the staff of the Detention Center. I consider myself very, very fortunate to work with such a great bunch of people highly dedicated to what they do and the very difficult task of trying to change the lives for the better of those people incarcerated in Calvert County. And I think we do a pretty good job at doing that. So, again, I thank you all. I thank you all for your support of the Detention Center and the work we do. So, being said.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Cross with the Detention Center. And to mirror that, can't thank you for all the help you've given us over the years, keeping it safe, helping that organization run quietly, and at the same time, you know, just making sure that the staff is recognized when you get a chance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Bradford.
Correctional Deputy First Class James Strain.
Good morning, Sergeant Clifton Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Corporal Johnny Wells.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sergeant Travis Arott.
Good morning. Paige Ruggles, Administrative Aid.
Good morning, Pam Ryan. Good morning, Pam Ryan, Executive and Administrative Aid.
Good morning, Commissioner Sheriff Cox. We just want to say thank you again for recognizing the correctional deputies. They do have a unique job. They do day in and day out. When they go to work, when they take their shift, they go to jail, I mean, for their tour of duty. I mean, they can't leave. And care and custody of inmates is a tough and, like I said, unique job, and they do it at a high level, and we appreciate everything they do for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Harvey, State's Attorney. I'm not here to come stand up front. I just wanted to say a few words of appreciation for these fine men and women, the job they do. They do their job so well that nobody even knows that they do it, and that's quite a commendation. They're an integral part of what we do here in the courthouse, ferrying prisoners back and forth. It's one of the few organizations I know that if you pick up the phone and call them and say, "We need somebody here," they'll have them up here in five or 10 minutes. You don't get that kind of service, believe me, I know, anywhere else in the state of Maryland. So, congratulations on this proclamation. It's well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So, before I read this, and I say this with a lot of times in proclamations, you can't put in print really what this covers. And I've said this many times, it's such a team effort, but to focus on you guys today, because, you know, from our State's Attorney to our sheriffs and the officers, just like the sheriff said, you're there with, and I'll be quite honest, a lot of people that we're afraid of, a lot of people that need help for many different things. But that's what you do, and that place is open 365. There is no, well, it's closed for this or that. It's open 24 hours a day, and there's a lot of folks in there that they, for whatever reason, have found themselves in trouble, need help, whether it's mental health or something else like that. And it's a challenging, challenging job. If any of you have any friends or family that do that work, it's tough. They wear it. And you, you, I can't imagine trying to do that, to get myself into a mindset, you know, you know, go to work on Monday, you go to work to your job, you go in, you know, maybe you had a long weekend, and you're kind of tired and sluggish. They can't be not on their A-game. They have to be on in 100% at all times, or somebody could get hurt, you know, whether it's the inmate or a fellow CO. And I'm going to tell you, guys, from when I was a little kid, to who was in that jail then, to who's there now, it's different. I'm telling you, it's different. And these men and women have to be on their A-game. They really do. And you just, there's not enough in here. It's really not. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for everything you guys do. Like you said, you don't hear about you guys, and you don't because you're always doing that job. You know, unfortunately, we live in a society where you only hear, you know, bad stuff. We don't praise the good stuff, you know, and you guys do it every day, and thank you so, so much. So, with that, I want to read this. It says, "Whereas Calvert County employs 80 dedicated correctional deputies and 13 professional civilian staff with the shared mission of..." with the shared mission of safely and securing housing the offenders legally entrusted to their custody and care. And whereas the Calver County Detention Center is staffed with well-trained professionals and deputies who uphold the law, operate under a strict doctrine of conduct, meet federal and state standards, and conform to the highest levels of ethics, morals, and personal conduct. And whereas correction is an honorable profession with deep roots in our community, generations of correctional professionals have lived in Calver County and served quietly and admirably behind the walls of local jails and prisons. The duty of these individuals is both honorable and demanding and requires the highest level of performance and dependability while being responsible for a most challenging population. And where it is important to remember those who have dedicated their lives to operating safe and secure facilities, escorting and transporting dangerous offenders, enforcing consequences that may lead to changes in behaviors and new lives for those in their custody. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May seven thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, be known as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Calver County. And be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to the Calver County Detention Center and observations of this national recognition given under our hands and seal this ninth day, May twenty-three, signed by all five county commissioners."
Yeah, just, um, just a little bit. To kick off Correctional Officer Week at the Detention Center, we hold a ceremony where we exchange the colors, where we put brand-new flags up above the Detention Center at the beginning of Correctional Officer Week every year. We take the American flag from the year before, and we fold it, and we put it in a nice case here, and we present it to our Correctional Officer of the Year that earned that honor while he was working that year at the Detention Center. So I'd like to take this time to call James Strain, Deputy Strain up here. There you are, sir. Congratulations, and appreciate all that hard work. Keep it up.
Thank you. All right. Hold it up front. Just scoot it back just a little bit. There we go. Pam, you know what? You might want to come over here on this side. So we'll get you right here. There we go. All right.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sir? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you so much. Thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you ever one day.
Congratulations again.
Thank you so much. Hey. Hi, thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Yes, thank you.
So the next proclamation is for Eler's Danlos Syndrome and Hypermobility. Commissioner Rosso.
Catherine Stone here. Okay. Do you have anybody else with you? Okay, please come up and tell a little bit about this, and your name as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Stone. I am the founder of the Eler's Danlos Support Group of Southern Maryland. One of our members wanted to say a few words, so I'm gonna keep my mouth shut.
Come on up.
Yes, say, come on up front.
I'm Crystal Curtis. I also have the Eler's Danlos Syndrome. And she was gonna say a couple words.
Hi, I'm Megan Vanucci. I just wanted to say thank you, not just for us here, but for the entire Calver County, those of us who fight Eler's Danlos every day. We just wanted to thank you for the time and energy it took to do this, and we thank you for the visibility and awareness that this brings. It's not an easy disease to live with, and with the visibility, we are able to bring more awareness to our younger kids and get them diagnosed and helped earlier and earlier. So we thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was not aware of this at all until about two years ago. And our niece was dating this young man, eventually married him. And her father-in-law and brother-in-law have this. And I know, I was not aware of it, and I have a pretty firm handshake. And when I went to shake his hand, my niece said, "Oh, my gosh, you almost killed him." And I did, I had no idea that this even existed. And I've seen what her father-in-law goes through at his age and what his firstborn son goes through at his age as well. So thank you all for being here and making everyone aware, because I didn't even know the name for it until I was reading this and knew that I would be presenting your proclamation. So thank you again, and I'll read it. Okay, "Whereas Eler's Danlos Syndrome, EDS, are a group of thirteen heritable connective tissue disorders with a combined prevalence of at least one in five thousand individuals worldwide. Each type of EDS has its own set of symptoms, but some are seen across all types, including joint hypermobility, skin hyperextensibility, and tissue fragility. And whereas hypermobility spectrum disorder, HSD, are connective tissue disorders that cause joint hypermobility, instability, injury, and pain, other symptoms such as fatigue, headaches, GI problems, and autonomic dysfunction are often seen as part of HSD. And whereas there is no cure for any type of EDS or HSD, therefore, these conditions are managed by addressing the symptoms. EDS and HSD can cause a variety of symptoms in many different areas of the body. People with these conditions often require multiple providers in different specialties to manage their care. And whereas access to professionals who are knowledgeable about EDS and HSD is limited, lack of awareness about EDS and HSD across the world stands in the way of the diagnosis, management, and research of these conditions. Increased awareness by both medical professionals and the general public can help improve the lives of people living with EDS and HSD. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, be known as Eler's Danlos Syndromes and Hypermobility Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those who are committed to educating and increasing awareness of these disorders and urge all citizens to take this opportunity to learn more about EDS and HSD. Given under our hands and seal this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three, signed by all five county commissioners."
Thank you. So the next proclamation is for Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. Commissioner Cox.
Good morning. Can I have Julie come up, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Machino, I am the Coordinator for the Calver County Family Network, which is the local management board for Calver County, and we are a division of the Department of Community Resources. Thank you for taking the time to recognize May as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month and this week as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. We have, like Commissioner Hans mentioned this morning during public announcement, the Second Annual Chalk to Walk Event that's happening throughout the county. So there are several locations to participate. This year, we also have several early childcare centers participating, all of the public schools. So we're hoping that everyone in the community will have an opportunity to see some great and encouraging messages throughout the community. This is a great week to raise awareness about the great resources that we do have in Calver County for children's mental health. And it's also an opportunity for us to look at what we could do better and what is needed to help support kids in our community. So with me today, I have Andrea McDonald-Vingland. She is the Director of the Local Behavioral Health Authority, and she'd like to just say a few words.
Sure. Come on up, please.
Hi, good morning. My name's Andrea McDonald-Vingland. I'm the Director at the Calver County Local Behavioral Health Authority out of the Calver County Health Department. And I would like to thank you, both as the Director, as a social worker, as a mother of two young Calver County residents, and as an individual who lived with mental illness as a child. So I actually grew up struggling with anxiety and depression and ADHD. And so I know firsthand what it's like to be a youth that struggles with their mental health. My children also are both neurodiverse, and so they are individuals living here in our county who learn a little bit differently and who, whose brains may function slightly differently than what would be considered average. So again, I thank you with multiple hats today for the acknowledgement of the importance of Children's Mental Health Month, Awareness Month, and Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. We're in unprecedented times. I can't tell you the number of times I've heard that over the past couple of years, but it is the truth. And when we're talking about youth mental health, the COVID- nineteen pandemic had extreme impacts on the health of our children's, our children's emotional health, the isolation, the stress, the fear, and the trauma. Everything that went, has gone on over the past couple of years has really brought youth mental health to the forefront. But at the same time, so while we're acknowledging more and we're a lot more aware of the importance of this, kids are struggling more than they have in recent years as well. And so we've got kids that struggle with regulating their emotions and their feelings. We have children who are struggling with social skills and knowing what to do in social situations, all while being at the developmental period where those are the most important things for them, is having social interactions and learning from each other and from new adults around them. So our kids have really been struggling, but we also have great opportunity because we have a lot of resources here in Calver County that we should be proud of. We have multiple behavioral health providers here within our local system of care. We have supportive resources for individuals with and without insurance. And we really do have a lot of stakeholders who care about the, the, the mental health of our youth here in the county. And so we're lucky in that sense as well. And then I would also just like to bring attention to, at our state legislature recently, the Kerwin Blueprint was passed, and there is a huge chunk of that blueprint that is dedicated to the mental health of youth in our schools. And so we're really excited about the opportunity that that brings us, because each jurisdiction is going to be awarded funding to assist with meeting the behavioral health needs of the students in our school system, which is, like I said, just so essential right now, because not only are they our children, they're also going to be us one day. And we're talking about our future social workers, our future commissioners, our future, you know, potential directors of community resources. So this is, this is our future community. So the importance of ensuring that we're bringing them up to the best of our ability with health and wellness to give them the best future possible, we'll give Calver County that's best future possible as well. So again, like I said, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart and from all of us at the Health Department as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources.
Rachel Morris, I am the LBHA Grant Specialist.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do. This is something we cannot just set aside. We have to do more resource, and we just have to do more for this week and everything. So like Julie said, if we miss one of the opportunities to get in there, we do have today from two to four at Duke Street, and we have May tenth at Audi Community Centers. So let's not forget that. So to the proclamation. Whereas local child and family-serving organizations in partnership with the Children's Mental Health Matters, a public awareness campaign is deserving May as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas mental health shapes the way children think, feel, and act, it also frames how children relate to themselves and other manage stress and cope with adversities. And whereas talking openly about mental health can reduce stigma and encourage those who are suffering to seek help and find a support network. And whereas Calver County Public Schools, Calver County Library, County Health, Calver County Behavioral Health, and Local Behavioral Health Advisory Council in partnership with the Calver County Family Network and Department of Parks and Recreation will host a Chalk to Walk event, May seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to raise awareness about children's mental health. And whereas students, school staff, government employees, and all citizens are invited to decorate sidewalks and pavement with messages and pictures of hope and support to encourage conversations about mental health and well-being. Now therefore be proclaimed by all Board of County Commissioners of Calver County the month of May to be known as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in Calver County. Through this action, we recognize the fundamental necessity to community-based mental health services for children and youth. Be it further proclaim, all citizens, and urge to recognize and support the mental health needs of children in our community. Given under our hands and seal this ninth day of May, signed by all five county commissioners. We thank you for all you do.
The next proclamation is for Drinking Water Week. Commissioner Cox.
JR.
Good morning, Commissioner. JR Cosgrove, Acting Director, Pollo Works. Pollo Works would like to thank you for recognizing Drinking Water Week. Here at Pollo Works, we do take it to a higher level to make sure we provide the quantity and quality of drinking water to our community. It is a vital resource that both the government and the county need to make sure we maintain for our future generations by doing proper water conservation practices throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. And I guess when we turn that spigot on, sometimes we always don't think where it comes from. We don't think where it starts from. We don't think what's going into it. So with that, I applaud all you do, JR, and thank you for keeping us having good water. So with that being said, the proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and the hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy. And whereas we recognize the critical work performed by the entire Water and Sewage Division who work around the clock to ensure the safety and quality of drinking water, bolster resilience for future water needs, and maintain the infrastructures communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its sources to consumers, taps. And whereas we are stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas each citizens of Calver, of the county is called upon to help protect our source water from pollution, practice water conservations, and learn more about the vital natural resources. Now, there be it proclaimed by the Calver County Board of Commissioners that the week of May seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, be it known as Drinking Water Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges all Calver County citizens to join in supporting this observance. Given under his hands and seal this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three, signed by all five commissioners. Thank you.
Who's next?
Okay.
You'd grab your little brother, little sister sometimes, put a hat on them, throw them in right field, just so you'd not have to forfeit the game, you know? And we kind of have a little chip on our shoulder sometimes down there, to be quite honest, you know, because, you know, it was the smallest part of the county, there wasn't a lot of people down there, and we became very tight, you know? And Coach, what you and that school and your staff's been able to do is really rally this town. I'm gonna tell you, when they go to the playoffs, there's people standing on the street there waving at the bus, you know? When they travel, my son, we were sitting there and he's like, Dad, there's so many more Patuxent people here than over there. That's just how it is, whether it's at the Raven Stadium, Blue Crabs, Annapolis, wherever that team goes, or there's baseball, football, anything with PACC, ROTC, the community is so involved, and we have you to thank for that, you know? You guys said it's, you know, when young kids come up there, the older kids, on their own time, will go out of their way, show them the ropes, you know, show them where things are, help them about. It's just it's just a culture, it's just so hard to explain. And I've learned from you guys, you know, because I'm a spectator and a fan, I'm watching and I'm, you know, and the kids get hurt, they help each other up. I've never one time ever seen the kids holler at each other, you know, you sometimes see in sports, no. The respect level with their parents, with the coaching staff, it's just it's just truly, it's just truly a great thing. It really, it really is. And this year, I know we're gonna win it all. We were close. You've heard sports is a game of inches. I'm telling you, it was it was this close, you were just watching, and I mean, it was just this close. So I'm telling you, if we play that team 10 more times, we'll beat them 10 times. I'm telling you, they're just outstanding programs, they really are. So I'm gonna, and also too, Coach Krauts was put into the Hall of Fame recently. I mean, it's just it's just phenomenal, just phenomenal. So this is whereas Coach Keith Powell has been recognized as the District Four Coach of the Year. Coaching is a profession that requires passion, dedication, and the ability to inspire young athletes to achieve their full potential. Coach Powell became the head baseball coach at Patuxent High School in spring of 2003 after working as an assistant coach the previous year. Prior to that, he coached middle school for three years and won two championships. In 2002, 22, I'm sorry, his team had an outstanding record of 24-1. I'm telling you guys, so close to 25, I'm telling you. Making them the first Southern Maryland Athletic Conference team to have an undefeated season. They ultimately lost the state championship, which was a tough blow for Keith Powell and the entire team. And also, I forgot to leave out too, talk about example, Thursday, middle school gets done playing, Coach Powell's out there fixing the field. You know, you show up at night, his staff, they're out there helping the kids, sorry, it's just like so much to, you just can't get in there. I mean, when the kid looks at it, looks at it and goes, wow, Coach is doing the field, you know? I mean, it's, you're never gonna hear, not my job down there. I mean, it's, 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 what a great, what a great staff. So whereas Coach Powell's achieved impressive accomplishments, including leading the Panthers to the state finals in 2003, 2012, and winning five regional championships. He has been honored with several awards, including the Maryland State Association of Baseball Coaches, District Four Coach of the Year Award three times, SMAC Coach of the Year three times, Calvert Recorder Coach of the Year four times. Under his leadership, Coach Powell's teams have won over 250 games. Additionally, three of his players have received the prestigious SMAC Player of the Year Award, first team All-Met recognition, including his son Brady, a freshman student athlete at George Mason University. Over 40 of his players in total have gone on to play college baseball, which is a remarkable accomplishment. And whereas Coach Powell currently resides in Lusby and holds multiple roles at Patuxent High School, he is not only the head baseball coach, but also serves as the athletic director. Powell earned his bachelor's degree from Geneva College in 1998, after graduating from Seneca Valley Senior High School in 1993. Throughout his professional career, he taught various subjects such as math, special education, alternative education. Moreover, he holds RAA and CAA degrees in athletic administration. Now therefore be a proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, extend our sincere congratulations to Coach Keith Powell for being recognized as District Four Coach of the Year. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins the community and many friends of Coach Powell, and thanking him for his faithful and loyal service, and extend him our best wishes for continued success, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of May 23, signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations.
So at this time, we need to recess and reconvene as the Board of Health. Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I make motion we recess. Board of County Commissioners reconvene as the Board of Health.
Second, I have a motion in a second that we recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Calver County Board of Health. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curries. Good morning, Dr. Polsky.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm joined by Dr. Folsom, who I know you've met before, and Dr. Folsom directs many of our chronic disease programs, and she's here to help me out in case there's any tough questions. Get in the slides up. So while waiting, oh, there's the slides.
Katie scares me just by walking.
I know, she glares. She's got the mom glare.
So for our new Commissioners, I tend to break up my segments with photos I take either locally or in travels here and there. My theme this time is farmers' markets, and I want to put a plug out for our local farmers' markets for everybody in TV land to certainly consider the next time that they need their produce to go. We have four farmers' markets in the county, plus we have produce stands that are scattered around on Saturdays, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Lusby and North Beach have farmers' markets on Saturdays, and Prince Frederick on Tuesdays, and Thursdays are over in Dunkirk. So keep yourself and your families healthier with good local produce and support our local farmers and our local small businesses. This picture, for those of you keeping score at home, this was taken in Turkey.
You said that exactly as I paid you to do.
I am happy to be of service. So every spring, we review our county rankings. New rankings come out in April of every year, and I'm happy to say that we have maintained our top-tier ranking. About a decade ago, we were middle of the pack, and we've been consistently fourth, fifth healthiest county in the state. It's Frederick, Carroll, and Calvert that are kind of clustered in there, and then we're hoping to overtake Montgomery and Howard at some point in the future. And so there are still areas that we certainly have room for improvement, but I will say that smoking rates, although still higher than certainly I, Dr. Folsom, or any healthcare provider would like to see, is appreciably lower than we were looking at a year ago. It's almost half of the smoking rate when you go back a decade ago. Obesity rates are probably our biggest thing to work on, but last year it was 36%, so we have nudged down a little bit. And then Dr. Folsom's team is working with our local clinicians, and a lot of outreach with organizations across the county and at health fairs to try to help people to maintain healthier weight. Excessive drinking is something we certainly could do better as well, and that's defined as two or more drinks a day, or binge drinking, which is five or more drinks a day at least once a month. And injury deaths, just a nuance on that, so we're a little bit lower than average. Injury deaths used to be primarily car crashes, but as I'm sure everyone's aware, over the last decade has become more and more a reflection of overdose deaths. And now we're seeing three times more overdose deaths than we are car crash fatalities.
So recently, I was in the Curtis Bay area of Baltimore City.
Yeah.
Driving through a little neighborhood, and when I got home, I commented to them all the way, every person walking down the street was smoking a cigarette. And you just, that was, stood out to me because you just don't see that anymore.
Right, yeah.
Every person I saw walking down the street had a cigarette in their hand.
And that's a tremendous accomplishment and will keep, you know, so many people so much healthier over time. I do want to point this data and all the data that comes through these county health rankings are several years old just because of the way the reporting goes. And our overdose death rates in our county, and I'll talk more specifically in a few moments, have continued to decline, which is in variance to what's happening across the country, where we continue to see increased rates. So my expectation is that over the next two years, as the numbers start to reflect what we're seeing over the last couple of years, that our injury death rates will continue to decline. Where we're doing great, teen births, we have the third lowest rate of teen births in the state. We have the lowest child mortality rate in the state. We also have the lowest rate of uninsured people, so certainly having medical insurance is critical for people to get access to timely health care and for people to have a primary care provider where they can get consistent health care. Both those things are really interesting, really important. I do want to note that certainly for suicide, as when we talk about overdoses, you know, in the ideal world, we would be looking at zero. But relative to other jurisdictions in the state, we have one of the lowest suicide rates in the state, and I know you just had a presentation earlier about child's mental health awareness, and we'll talk a little bit more about behavioral health in general. There are tremendous amount of efforts going on in the county to continue to improve. We're not satisfied. We want to continue to see that get lower and lower over time. And life expectancy, which I'll also touch a little bit more, the average Calver County resident lives about three and a half years longer than the average US resident.
So, Dr. Polsky, the suicide rate, is that based on your place of residence or where the suicide occurs?
It's based on place of residence. Yeah. And that's how the state keeps those statistics. So those are not our independent, that's the state being uniform about the way they collect those statistics.
Because I only bring it up because of the bridge, we have, you know.
Right, yes.
Several individuals and...
This is a fish market in Greece, and I don't think that we can really appreciate what's happening locally unless we put it in context of what's happening across the country. So this is a graph looking back to 1980 of life expectancy in the US relative to 10 other high-income countries. These are primarily European countries, but also Japan and Australia. You can see, starting around 1980, there's a gap developing between life expectancy in the US and these other countries. That gap worsened around 2010, which is when we started seeing a significant number of deaths related to opioid overdoses. And then you can see that dramatic drop off, actually the first time since World War II that in this country we've seen a decline in life expectancy happened with COVID in 2020. And that did not have to happen, at least to that extent, because if you take a look at the average of the other 10 countries, it did have a little bit of a dip, but it wasn't nearly as steep, and they recovered within a year. So it's not because other countries spend more on health care. There are lots of reasons why we struggle the way that we do, but one of those is certainly that we spend very little in preventing health problems, and we spend a whole lot on treating people after health problems begin. So we spend twice as much per capita on health care in this country as those other 10 countries as an average. And just drawing down a little bit more what happened during, since 2020, is about half of that million excess deaths were directly related to COVID, and the other half were primarily attributable to behavioral health problems. So this woman who was in a market in Peru, those are guinea pigs for sale, and I will say from personal experience, not great eating.
So just to go back...
What's in that bucket?
Guinea pigs.
That's nasty.
That's where, guinea pigs are actually native to the Andes.
It's protein.
Yeah.
So how do you adjust for the COVID impact to life expectancy?
So those are the statisticians, epidemiologists at CDC, and, you know, and these have been calculated. Hopkins was keeping track of things, and Mayo Clinic and those kind of places as well. So the age adjusts, meaning that if, you know, if you have a population where you have nothing but seniors, certainly you're gonna see death rates different than if you have populations that are primarily younger people. So I'm not sure I'm exactly answering your question.
I think with that being an anomaly, wouldn't you take that out of the picture, out of the average?
Yeah, that's my question. Shouldn't you adjust?
Well, so what they, they took a look at the COVID mortality rate in those other countries and looked at the COVID mortality rate in the US. And what we've seen in every count has shown is that in the US, per capita deaths due to COVID were just much higher than in other high-income countries. And again, as we appreciate locally, that overdose deaths, deaths related to other mental health, behavioral health problems are in excess of what they're seeing per capita in other countries.
So you would expect that to trend back up as we get out of COVID?
The life expectancy.
Yeah. As far as life expectancy is concerned.
Right. And then just, I think most people are familiar, so just very quickly, 2020 and 2021, COVID was the third-leading cause of death in this country. Numbers, and then unintentional injuries, which again are primarily drug overdoses at this point in time. Numbers for 2022 just came out this past week. COVID deaths have decreased over this past year, and overdose deaths continue to increase. So for 2022, unintentional deaths now rank third behind heart disease and cancer, and COVID deaths rank fourth, so still appreciable what we're dealing with with COVID. So a bit of good news out of all this, at least relative to our counterparts around the state and other parts of the country, that Calver has the lowest rate of COVID hospitalizations and COVID deaths out of any of the 24 jurisdictions in Maryland. Calver residents were 50% less likely to be hospitalized as a result of COVID during these last three years, and the average Marylander are 57% less likely to die as a result. And what that means is that there are about 500 residents of Calver who were not hospitalized because of all the efforts that went into things, who even if we were average along the state, would have ended up in the hospital. If you're looking at like the jurisdictions that did the worst, we would have seen about another 1,300 or 1,400 people hospitalized over these last three years without some of the efforts that were taking place locally. And there are about 100 people who are alive in our county today because of the efforts that happened compared to if we had mortality rates that were average for the state. And so why have we done better? Well, there are a lot of reasons, and I could spend a couple hours actually talking about all the things that were done across the county. One of the key things is that we immediately recognized that nursing homes were really potential tinderboxes, and we assigned Health Department infectious disease nurses, one to each of our nursing homes, to make sure that each of those nursing homes had appropriate personal protective equipment for all of their staff, that they were constantly being kept up to date on hygiene measures as research, which was evolving at an unprecedented level, that they were aware of how to adjust their ventilation systems, filtration, for quarantine measures, how to keep people segregated so infection did not spread the way that we saw in a lot of other nursing homes around the state. And when the federal government contracted out vaccinations to CVS and Walmart, they fell flat very quickly, and our physicians and our nurses were right there within literally a day or two to jump in and start providing vaccinations to nursing home assisted living staff and residents. So that was a huge plus for us. Our primary care providers around the county were early adopters of office-based COVID testing. That was not the norm around the state, around the country. So most places, people were going to these mass test sites, and you probably remember when it was taking three or four days to get results back? Well, those people were going without any medical attention during all that time. Here in the county, if somebody had diabetes, somebody had congestive heart failure, COPD, they were seeing their doctor. We were making sure, Dr. Folsom did a great job with this, making sure that all of our local practices had test kits that they needed on an, nobody ever ran out of... One of the key things is that we immediately recognized that nursing homes were really potential tinderboxes. And we assigned Health Department infectious disease nurses, one to each of our nursing homes, to make sure that each of those nursing homes had appropriate personal protective equipment for all of their staff, that they were constantly being kept up to date on hygiene measures as research, which was evolving at an unprecedented level, that they were aware of how to adjust their ventilation systems, filtration for quarantine measures, how to keep people segregated so infection did not spread the way that we saw in a lot of other nursing homes around the state. And when the federal government contracted out vaccinations to CVS and Walmart, they fell flat very quickly. And our physicians and our nurses were right there within literally a day or two to jump in and start providing vaccinations to nursing home-assisted living staff and residents. So that was a huge plus for us. Our primary care providers around the county were early adopters of office-based COVID testing. That was not the norm around the state, around the country. So in most places, people were going to these mass test sites. And you probably remember when it was taking three or four days to get results back. Well, those people were going without any medical attention during all that time. Here in the county, if somebody had diabetes, somebody had congestive heart failure, COPD, they were seeing their, their doctor. We were making sure, Dr. Folsom did a great job with this, making sure that all of our local practices had test kits that they needed. On an, nobody ever ran out of test kits. People could get a rapid test and then if they were waiting for a PCR, that they were still having their diabetes managed. They were having their COPD addressed. That kept people out of the hospital. And I will say that we probably had the best educated clinicians in the state because weekly we were keeping up with all the research out of the major institutions, what was coming down and not just domestically but overseas. And we were talking back and forth to make sure everything from the pediatricians to people taking care of our seniors were up to date on what the latest improvements were so that, again, we could keep everybody healthier. Our Health Department capitalized on relationships that we have and forged new partnerships with minority organizations, religious congregations, senior centers and congregate housing areas, again, to help. So for religious congregations, how do you make sure that when people come together that you're minimizing the potential for spread of virus? Letting organizations educate people who were members there so they could make decisions to keep themselves healthier. We had lots of outreach vaccination clinics with these partnerships. All those things went wonderfully.
Still do.
Yes, yes. And we're building on that with, with the programs that Dr. Folsom is doing with chronic disease. For our environmental health department, they work with the county's economic development team to work with local businesses. And that included Zoom calls with business owners and managers. We had individualized by industry segment written information so people could keep their staff and keep their customers healthy. So we had a one-page with bullet points for daycares, for small retailers, for restaurants. We had about a dozen different one-pagers that was really individualized so people could really take good measures to keep their staff healthy because if you don't have a workforce, you can't open your doors. And we did differ in other ways, including vaccination by health risk, which we were able to do because of such great partnerships between public health and our private providers that in most counties, they were just doing it by age. And people who were, didn't meet an age criteria but had significant underlying health problems were denied vaccinations at this point. So I just want to remind everybody that although COVID case counts are much lower, Dr. Folsom and I do not have masks on today, that does not mean that COVID is gone. And we still need to take precautions. So we were talking hundreds of cases a week in the past. Now we're talking dozens of cases a week. And this is hospitalization rates going back through the entire three years. You can see toward the right edge of the screen, the hospitalizations across the state are much lower, about the lowest they've been throughout. But we are still seeing one or two Calvert residents each week hospitalized because of COVID. And we are still seeing occasional deaths, although not nearly as frequent. Our last death of a Calvert resident was about seven weeks ago. So for people who have high-risk underlying health conditions, I still would strongly recommend that when they're out in public in situations where there's significant exposure risk, that they still wear a mask, whether that's a cloth mask, which cuts your risk roughly in half, or a surgical mask, or an N ninety-five, which cuts your odds by more than eighty percent. That's still very good protective health measures and people should keep up on their vaccines. The data continues to show that people who are up to date on their vaccinations are five times less likely to be hospitalized than people who are unvaccinated. This is, and then nineteenth-century railway station, which is no longer a railway station in Portugal. And the reason, actually the primary reason I keep up with my COVID boosters is to prevent long COVID. So I don't, I don't have any chronic health problems. If I got COVID, it's unlikely I'd end up in the ICU, no guarantee, but unlikely. But long COVID is miserable for people who get it. And we've talked about this before, but I think this bears repeating. In children, studies are showing about five, maybe ten percent of children are, have ongoing symptoms, usually fatigue, problems focusing and concentrating. For adults, it's more like ten to fifteen percent. And as you get older, the potential for long COVID symptoms continues to increase along that spectrum. There was a study recently out of UCLA that showed that seventy-two percent of people with long-term symptoms after COVID initially had just a mild to moderate infections, these were not people ending up being hospitalized. And for some of these people, their long-term symptoms were actually worse than their acute symptoms when they got infected. And so again, the entire age spectrum is at risk. And just like with hospitalization, we see that people who are vaccinated have about five times less, they're five times less likely to develop long COVID than people who are unvaccinated.
Hey Doc, tell them about prevention though. I've never seen this stuff. Shouldn't they still go back to eating right and exercising?
Absolutely.
Especially we're just talking about farmers markets out there, eating fresh, healthy food and exercise. I mean, no disrespect to shots and all that kind of stuff, but the healthier the body is, I mean...
Absolutely. So for long-term, because we don't know what the future is going to bring in terms of viruses and epidemics and pandemics, that people should be thinking about the ever-present potential for heart attacks, for strokes. Many cancers are predicated on poor diet or obesity. And so most of the most common breast cancer, colon cancer, lung cancer, more smoking. But they're things that we put in our bodies and which dramatically increase. But in the short term, because if somebody is, let's say, seventy pounds overweight, they're not going to lose seventy pounds between now and flu season. They can get started and they might be able to take off ten, maybe fifteen that they can sustain and continue from there. But, you know, it's, it's really important at this point to still maintain with vaccines. So it's that dual, you want to optimize your health for lots of reasons. And regardless, again, I'm not overweight, I don't smoke, but I'm still at risk of getting an acute respiratory virus which could lead to symptoms. So, you know, it's still important for people to keep up with their vaccinations.
And I'll just comment, you know, my daughter has asthma. There are children with type one diabetes. There's really no, you know, it's not like you can prevent type one diabetes, but that puts them at far greater risk. And not to diminish the benefits of healthy foods and exercise and activity, but there are certain conditions, even the Ellers Danlos folks that were here. There are certain conditions that are just genetically, you know, going to be present for those folks and that puts them at greater risk for a whole host of things. And so, again, not to dismiss diet and exercise because that's something I'm a huge proponent of, you know, healthy eating. But ultimately, those inborn things, we really can't-
Sure. And I definitely get that. I just think they just, they downplay how important, important eating. And not that I'm opposed to childhood, but eating right and exercising properly, I mean, it's just-
And Commissioner, that gets back to one of the earlier slides. And in this country, we put way too much resources, money into treating problems and not nearly enough trying to prevent them from happening.
But you see nine thousand commercials for shots and pills on TV every day. I never see anything about eating right.
Yeah, well, and how many commercials do you see for fast food and you can go down the whole list?
Exactly.
So, and then, so short-term, long COVID symptoms, fatigue, shortness of breath, these are quality of life problems, which I don't want to underscore that because for an eight-year-old who is trying to focus and concentrate in math class, you know, these can be extremely problematic. But it's also the, the other, so you see on the right side of the screen, the graphic with essentially every organ system in our body is potentially can be impacted by COVID. So now we've had multiple studies that are showing that people who develop COVID the year after are much more likely to be diagnosed with new onset diabetes or if they were managing their diabetes with just medication, now they need insulin. And also about twice the risk of heart attacks, strokes in people developing either asthma or COPD. Again, unvaccinated people are most at risk for this. Vaccinated people are much less likely to develop these long-term problems. And then I will put in a plug that everyone should get a bivalent booster. So the bivalents became available last September. So if anyone's last vaccine was prior to last September, they have not yet received a bivalent. And for people who have completed their initial vaccination series and they just lack that bivalent, they should either get one now or at the latest at the start of flu season in September. And I'm saying that because the COVID rates are relatively low. For people who have high-risk underlying conditions, they should just go ahead and get their bivalent now. They should not wait because you don't know what's going to happen over the next three, four months while we're waiting for fall to roll around. And certainly that's the second bullet point that for anyone sixty-five and over or, actually, I'm sorry, different bullet point. For sixty-five and over or for those with chronic conditions, even if you've already had a bivalent, the recommendation is to boost back up again. Again, for those people, they almost certainly are touching base with their private, their private doctor or nurse practitioner. That's a conversation that they should have, whether they should get another dose now or whether it's okay for them to wait until September to get their boost. In Jerusalem. And then we'll get the fentanyl and drug overdoses. So the graph that never seems to want to stop. And so the top line is the cumulative number of overdoses. Almost all of those you can see over the last several years have been driven by fentanyl. Heroin started declining around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen as fentanyl became, came on the market.
Do we see any one age group in that chart?
So we don't here, but, but I will say that, that the, the ages that we see the greatest overdoses are between about thirty-five and fifty-five for fatal overdoses. We see, we see fatal overdoses. It's rare. Honestly, I cannot recall the last person under eighteen who's had a fatal overdose in our county. But the younger somebody is, the less likely that overdoses to be fatal. But we do see people in their twenties die from overdoses. Nobody is completely resilient. I do want to point at the bottom of the slide, it shows that we reached our peak in Calvert of overdose deaths in two thousand and seventeen. Last year, our number of overdose deaths was half of what it was five years ago. So, and that's fifty-seven percent below the state average in per capita overdose deaths. So again, just like with suicides, we'd like to see that number zero in the ideal world. But we've done a tremendous job as a community driving those numbers down. Things could be much worse. And here's a county-
Do you think that's Narcan?
Well, there's Narcan everywhere, so it's not, that's not the answer.
Okay.
I'm not saying Narcan doesn't play a role, but that doesn't distinguish us from what's happening in other counties. And you can see a county-by-county breakdown and the per capita, per hundred thousand residents, which forty, this is last year, forty overdose deaths. And we had seventeen, which is now the third lowest overdose death rate in the state. And when we first started looking at numbers, which was about eight or nine years ago, I think we had the sixth highest rate of overdose deaths in the state. So we have made more progress than any other county in the state of Maryland. And that is in large part because of just a tremendous amount of efforts through our Health Department. Our Health Department, as you're aware, is our county's largest behavioral health treatment provider. We've done just enormous work over the past decade, providing outreach, working with county agencies and partners and integrating treatment services to provide meaningful, ongoing care. And I think that ongoing is really what's most critical and coordinating. So when somebody comes out of a twenty-eight-day residential treatment center, they immediately can establish with ongoing care because we know what the relapse rates are when people are just on their own after they complete a residential treatment center. We have same-day appointments. We get people in right away. And I'm just going to highlight, and for the benefit of our new commissioners, two of our programs, we, I think one of the things we've also done is a tremendous job of taking that broader look societally, that we realize that we have several truly high-risk groups. One of those are our inmates in our local detention center, where we see at least eighty percent with diagnosable and treatable behavioral health problems. So years back, we coordinated with Major Reese and the staff at the detention center with, you can see all the community agencies, parole and probation, Department of Social Services, multiple county agencies, Sheriff's Office to put a much more robust program in place. And that has just had tremendous benefits. A lot of the inmates have children, and I'm talking like young children. And so it's, it's not just that person who needs the treatment, it's an impact multigenerationally. And I can, I'm fortunate enough not to grow up in a household with substance use, but I, I treat patients directly and I see the potential for these kids when their parents are struggling with drugs. Rapid Response is our mobile crisis team, which works in concert with both the Sheriff's Office and EMS to make sure that people who survive that initial overdose or it's a suicide attempt, that those people can start to get care for their behavioral health problems. Generally, within twenty-four hours, we get them in. Oh, and I will just put in one plug for one other program, which is the first sort of specialized program we put in, which was for pregnant women with substance use problems because there was zero care for substance use when, when I started ten years ago for pregnant women. They had to go up to Baltimore to be able to get services. When we put that program into place about eight, nine years ago, on a, on a routine basis, I was carrying fifteen, twenty patients at a time, treating them with Suboxone or whatever they needed for their substance use. That meant at any given time, we had fifteen or twenty pregnant women with active substance use problems in our county. One of my patients delivered about six weeks ago, healthy baby. Baby did not go into withdrawal. Mom's doing great. I now have zero pregnant patients I'm carrying. I have some of my postpartum patients. Now, we will have some others here and there, but that is an indicator of the type of work that we've done. It's not just patching somebody, but it's looking at their entire life and how do you get them back to education? How do you get jobs for them? How do you help them out so that now they can become good functional residents and neighbors? And how do they become good parents? So this is a farmer's market in Thailand. Interesting vegetables there. And then I'm going to wrap up as I kind of become a tradition with tick-borne illnesses. So nationally, tick-borne illnesses have doubled over the last fifteen years. Again, we have bucked the trend in Calvert County. Most of this increase has to do with extended warm weather and ticks are just out more. But there's other factors that have gone into that national increase. So you can see at the bottom of the slide that two thousand and fifteen, when we started talking about this right here at these meetings, that we had ninety cases of Lyme that were reported. There may be others, but ninety that were reported. It's a reportable infection, meaning if a doctor diagnoses or a lab, they have to report it to the Health Department and to the state. So since two thousand and fifteen, I think in large part, probably almost solely due to increased community awareness and our providers being very diligent about treating people, that we have dropped down from ninety cases per year to last year, we only had thirty-two. So just a reminder to everybody that Lyme disease is almost a hundred percent preventable. So on the top of the slide, you can see things that you should be doing. I think the most important is daily checks. It takes thirty-six hours once a tick crawls onto you before it can transmit Lyme disease. So as long as you remove that tick prior to thirty-six hours, there's zero chance you're going to get Lyme. So for those with children, a once-a-day check is fine and you don't need to panic. If you find the tick, you know, pull it off.
What about the lone star and all that?
Yeah, so, yeah.
About the same thirty-six hours?
So that, those are less defined. And, you know, searching through the most current literature, it's still unclear. So there, there are about a dozen different tick-borne diseases. Lyme is certainly most prevalent and as the last slide showed, or the one before, eighty-two percent of tick-borne infections are Lyme. But it still leaves eighteen percent that are other things. So your point is very well taken about, about Alpha-gal, which is what's transmitted by lone stars. And lone star ticks can, can transmit a few other diseases as well. But certainly the sooner you get the tick off, the better. The, the reason the thirty-six hours is important is that when the tick attaches, first off, it takes about two hours to really attach. So I was out working in the yard over the weekend. Close to two hours, I was out there, immediately went in, just took a shower. If, at that point, it's likely, especially for the little nymphs, that I'll just wash them off, you know, because the little nymphs are really hard to see and find. But again, you know, to transmit, it has to attach, then there's a whole elaborate process where it actually secretes all these enzymes to kind of break through the skin because, you know, you don't feel any of this. It's not like it's like cutting. And then it regurgitates from its stomach through, once it gets to the blood vessels. That's where we see the Lyme. Yeah.
Minister Vassalla really likes this part of your presentation.
So in all likelihood, for most of the, the virus and bacterial-borne infections that are through ticks, it's going to be the same thirty-six hours. Alpha-gal is, is more complex because it's, it's a, it's an allergy. And that, again, is less defined. So all I would say in that case is the sooner you get the tick off, the better. And again, going back to, why get the tick in the first place? So spray your DEET?
They're terrible this year. My son pulled seven off my dog yesterday. He hadn't been, he was crawling on her.
Right. And speaking of dogs, so these things, and I forgot to shave my legs today I took this picture. So for the benefit of everyone, I guess it was last year.
You just added something to the presentation.
There you go. I, I went out intentionally without any DEET, figuring it wouldn't take very long. And sure enough, lone star, you can see a little dot on there, lone star tick crawled up on me. So we have these two little things that you can buy at the pet store for about two, three bucks. The little bit bigger one, and we have a dog and we have a yard. And so, you know, the bigger one's good for like lone star ticks and adult deer ticks. The little tiny one for the deer ticks, especially when they're in the larval or nymph stages. It's hard to get them with this. Tweezers are fine, but these actually work, I think, better. You don't leave anything behind because it's not like tearing into them. You're just like scooping, as you can see, you're scooping under and plucking them away and just stick them on a piece of masking tape and you're done. And you don't have to go out and buy like expensive things or anything. Again, you know, two, three bucks at a pet, pet store. So I think that is it for my slides. Yeah. All right. So just to wrap. So just to wrap, it's been a really, really hard last three years or so in, in so many respects. Things could have been a lot worse here. And this is really a tribute to the community that we have, that we had people working together. And I don't take that for granted because a lot of places, well, no place really replicated what we were able to do in so many facets across. So it was, it was businesses, it was public agencies, it was private in the medical field, and it was community groups coming together to make us, keep us healthier and prevent a lot of tragedy that, you know, fortunately, we didn't have to experience. So that does not to, you know, disregard the people who unfortunately did die because of COVID or have died because of overdoses, but there are families that are intact, there are children that can be with their grandparents, you know, for years to come because we did a better job.
So I can't recall right now off the top of my head, but there's an issue with cancer that we have high rate. Is it death or what is it? I just don't recall right now.
Yeah, so it's, it's a mixed bag with cancers across the board. We have some cancers like we, and we've talked.
One I'm worried is top of the list.
With breast cancer, so we're not the worst in anything. I, I, I guess that showed up on social media, but we have certainly a higher-than-expected breast cancer rate, and there are a few other cancers that we have higher than expected. We've done work with the epidemiologists at state level in the past. Certainly no secret, anybody with a nuclear plant in, in our county, we have, you know, naval facilities that, that were chemicals used, this, that, and the other. We've looked geographically, there is no hotspot in our county. So it's not like these rates are concentrated around the nuclear plant, they're not concentrated around the liquid natural gas plant, they're not concentrated around those other facilities where, there's been administration changeover up in Annapolis and Baltimore, legislative session just ended, so people were busy and there's a lot of turnover up there. I think it's a time where we will touch base again with our colleagues up at state level to see if we can delve back into the stats. Has anything else changed over the past few years that might add some more clues that just weren't apparent before? So as much as I would like to give you, here's the answer to our question, but in terms of are, are we, you know, some horrible, worrisome community with cancer? No, it's, that's not the case. And, but again, we look for opportunities to continue to make our community healthier in, you know, and cancer is certainly one of those areas.
And from your research, there's no relatable evidence tied to our two facilities?
No, and that, again, that was.
Because we do hear that all the time.
Right. And that was one of the first things that we looked at is, you know, we looked at zip codes, we looked at, you know, anything that could tie, and there was nothing there. And I want to make it very clear, I have no financial ties and I have no personal ties to anyone involved with whoever runs that place, so, you know, this is just.
Isn't it a shame we live in that world?
Yeah.
Did you even have to say that?
You know, we take pride at our health department, we're, we are here to serve the community.
I'm here at all times.
And, you know, we're not here to do anybody's bidding.
Love to have a tenth of, one to hundredth of the money that people think that I get, you know, I swear. Get 48K a year.
I'd just like to have half your money.
Yeah, right, right. Get 48K a year from taxpayers.
About vaping in the schools, what can, how can we do better on that?
Yeah, it's a huge topic of conversation. So we're working with the health educators at all four of the high schools. We've done health fairs in the high schools as well to try to educate the youth. We actually started a vaping session on Saturday mornings, once a month, for any students that are found vaping, they can be referred by the school or community members, if they're ready and willing to be done with vaping, they can come to these information sessions. It's about four, three to four hours long. They learn about the harms of vaping and, and the dangers, but they also learn about coping strategies, refusal skills, how to prepare for the next time that they may be offered a vape or maybe, you know, enticed to, to do that. But the health educators have been a huge partner for us in, in the school system. So we'll continue to work with them. We have a tobacco and cancer coalition that meets quarterly. It's always a topic of conversation at that meeting, and that is based off of the community health needs assessment, which you probably are all aware is happening this year, so the hospital has to do it in order to stay accredited. We have been partners in the development of that. Tammy Halterman and myself have been involved for weeks, if not longer, in discussions about how to roll that out. So that'll be, that'll be coming out today. We have things like the Women's Health Expo, the Men's Health Expo. So Women's Health Expo is today, Men's Health Expo is June 6th, and those are other opportunities where families can come through, teens can come through if parents are concerned about their teens vaping or doing other unhealthy behaviors. You know, that's a great opportunity. It's a nonjudgmental, you know, situation where you're going through an expo or a fair, and people might be a little bit more willing to kind of pick up a brochure or pamphlet at that point.
So on average, how well are these classes attended? Does that agree?
Not very well attended. I will say that had we had more referrals probably from the schools for youth that were caught, so they were basically given an option to do an in-school suspension or the class. And oftentimes, a Saturday morning class is probably not what is going to be selected over an in-school suspension. We do put.
Is choosing that the child or the parent?
It's probably a collaborative effort, and I would imagine that, you know, unlike my kids that I can just put in a car seat in the back of the van and strap them in, you know, there has to be some participation and cooperation from, from the student themselves. We are going on hiatus for the summer. We typically will do that with some of our classes, not just the tobacco and vaping stuff. We don't see a great enrollment over the summer months for a lot of the classes. People are not really concerned about doing some of those healthier behaviors when they're planning trips and, you know, doing fun things. So our next planned tobacco and vaping session for the youth is going to be probably this September when school resumes.
So do you work with the schools and forums?
Yeah, so we work with Chris Kano, who's in charge of nursing. We work with Mr. Kurtz, who's in charge of student services. All the health educators we meet with routinely, and, and those are really the people that we work sort of more one-on-one with, with these things. Our health educators actually, as a part of their curriculum, they speak about vaping and they talk about the dangers and how to cope and how to have refusal skills. I will tie it back to the anxiety, depression issues that a lot of our youth are having. You know, they're reaching for something as a quick fix. I think in general, people like a quick fix, right? It's harder to fix the underlying anxiety or depression that might be going on, so they'll, you know, start vaping or they might start doing other things. So we really want to impress upon people healthy coping strategies. How can you get through stressors in your life, you know, without having to reach for something that could be potentially dangerous to your health? So those are other things that the health educators are teaching them while in those classes. And our, our role really is to sort of make sure that they're getting that reinforcement and know that our team is there to help them. We actually coordinate with Dr. Galliot-Sados. He's actually coming down tomorrow. He's a pulmonologist from Hopkins. He does education to our local community physicians and providers, but he also, like, if we have a student who wants to quit vaping and they need some help, he can actually be, you know, called any time of the day and he can talk with those families.
One more question. Well, back to your COVID presentation. Is there, is someone keeping track of the side effects of the COVID vaccinations versus the effects and the illnesses associated with those that were not vaccinated? Is there a direct comparison being done there?
So there, there are multiple registries that are national that track side effects from vaccinations, and to this point, fortunately, COVID vaccine has been extremely safe. There's no vaccine that's 100% safe.
Correct.
But we're talking risks of like one in 100,000 people to have some kind of.
You just hear people having like, like fibromyalgia symptoms, that type of thing from the vaccination. That's, that's what I'm asking, is, is that being kept track of or?
And so when, when they take a look at these, they take a look also at underlying background. So they're going to be, there may be one or two people diagnosed with fibromyalgia this week in Calvert County. Well, if, if they got a vaccine a week ago, did the vaccine cause it or would they have just developed it anyway?
Exactly.
And so when they take a look through these, I mean, they have epidemiologists who are dedicated to doing this, and so what they're looking at is they're comparing to general population, are we seeing a greater incidence in people who have gotten vaccinated versus people, somebody's going to get into a car crash today. We certainly wouldn't say because you got a vaccine a week ago that caused you to get in a car crash, but, you know, so it's always a comparator. And at this point, again, we know there's a very small subset, there are problems, things like Guillain-Barre that are close to one in a million, but we can, you know, because so many people get vaccinated, we can kind of find that one in a million. So there, there, I've not seen any link between fibromyalgia and the vaccine.
Or clots. I mean, there's, there's a whole list of things that you hear about.
So there, right. The, the Johnson-Johnson vaccine in particular, there was, there were some increase in clots, so we're talking like one in 10,000 or less. Almost no one got the J&amp;J vaccine, almost everyone's gotten the other. And, and so we haven't seen any new, new side effects that were not reported in the first six months. And that goes along with every other vaccine that's ever been rolled out, from measles vaccines, the tetanus vaccines, is that if we're going to see problems, we see it early. We have yet to see a vaccine where a couple of years later, all of a sudden, something pops up out of nowhere.
How do you find out about this? Like, we go to doctors in Anarundel County, and my husband has had some pretty significant side effects after the vaccine. Are they reported back to Calvert County, or how do you collect the data?
So that data is not county-specific because it won't make a difference if you live in Calvert County or you live in Anarundel or you live in New Jersey. That it's more, this is where, and you need large numbers. That is where you need hundreds of thousands to be able to really take a look, is this just, you know, somebody was going to develop problems and the timing of the vaccine was just coincidental, or did the vaccine actually cause? And so we don't have Calvert-specific numbers because they would not be large enough to help us really determine the significance. But his doctor very likely reported to the, their system, one of the systems that Dr. Folsom had mentioned during that.
Thank you.
There, I mean, there are clinics that are developed for the long COVID symptoms too. So for people who are suffering from that long COVID that Dr. Polsky talked about, because that's what we're hearing in the medical community, that's more concerning is, you know, somebody gets symptoms, they get a little bit better, but then they have that chronic fatigue, headaches, they continue to have shortness of breath. There are entire clinics now devoted to that, those conditions. So for anybody watching who may have those symptoms, you know, talk to your provider because there are ways to get some, some help for those symptoms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to adjourn as the Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting of the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
A motion in second that we adjourn as the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to consent. There are three items under consent today on the agenda. Item one, Department of Finance and Budget, health insurance subsidy for retirees. Item two, Department of Finance and Budget, healthcare plan. Item three, Office of County Administrator, Harriet E. Brown, video equipment budget adjustment. Are there any objections to the items listed under consent?
None.
Hearing none. Those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to old business, Department of Planning and Zoning, Calvert County zoning ordinance update. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Will Hager. He is our Planner Three and has been working feverishly on the zoning ordinance to get it ready to get it out to the public. So we're here today as a follow-up. We invited you to sit in on the work session with the Planning Commission in April. So if anybody wants to watch the full presentation, it would be up on the Meetings on Demand on the county's website under the Planning Commission's April meeting. So we're following up with you today as a work session to get some direction and support for moving forward with the zoning ordinance. We have a draft scheduled for that, and then also requesting to process text amendments and map amendments during the update and not on a one-off basis. But we'll get more into that and he'll take you, if it's okay, we're going to forego the memo and go straight to the presentation. Okay? Will?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And we'll get right into it. So staff conducted a Planning Commission, a work session that the Board of County Commissioners were present for on April 19th. That set the foundation for how the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance work together to carry out the vision and goals for how the county, county's constituents want the county to grow and develop. The work session reviewed the goals and objectives of this update to set the stage as we progress through the future work sessions to review the articles of the draft for the Board's consideration and discussion. Staff is returning to the B O C C to follow up on action items for the B O C C to consider and direct staff on how to proceed regarding the zoning ordinance, public adoption schedule, and proposed text amendments. To consider all zoning ordinance amendments through the update process instead of through the current process. The county's comprehensive plan was recently adopted in 2019 and amended in 2022. The project began in 2016. Since the beginning of that project, county staff and comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan consultant, conducted a zoning analysis of existing conditions. Through the confirmation of the county's vision through the comprehensive plan adoption, staff began working on developing zoning recommendations and a draft ordinance that would bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Title four, the land use article of the Maryland Annotated Code as amended empowers the Board of County Commissioners to enact a zoning ordinance to provide for its administration, enforcement, and amendment. The zoning ordinance is one tool necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance is designed to regulate land uses. Many aspects of land use can impact adjoining properties, neighborhoods, public facilities, and overall county development. As mandated, the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance is adopted to regulate land uses as part of the effort to promote the health, safety, and general welfare, welfare of Calvert County residents. Ordinance 35-06, approved by the Board of County Commissioners, adopted the current Calvert County zoning ordinance in May of 2006. Many, many text amendments have been adopted amending the zoning ordinance since. So due to the complexity of the rollout schedule, staff requests that the B O C C, B O C C discuss and consider text amendments that will allow for zoning ordinance changes to be considered as part of the update in lieu of the current process until the adoption of the new zoning ordinance. Staff requests the review and approval of proposed public adoption schedule. So the proposed text amendment in regard to text amendments appears in red on this slide, and we'd also like to bring forward a text amendment that addresses map amendment requests in a similar fashion. So the plan is to split up joint work sessions to review the ordinance in manageable chunks. There will be open public comment periods prior to each joint work session that will then be compiled, considered, and reported on as part of the joint work session. Periodically throughout the process, staff will host public forums to allow for increased public engagement and education and allow for citizen questions and interaction with staff. And so what we're looking at on this slide is our draft work session schedule. However, there have been some developments in Annapolis that, that may require us to make some adjustments to the specific articles and focus on these dates. For example, there have been changes to the forest conservation law, which were signed by the governor yesterday, I believe. And those are going to require us to rewrite the forest conservation article significantly in order to bring that in line with state law, and we won't be able to do that until the Department of Natural Resources issues its interpretation and guidance to the counties on the new law, which we might not get until the very end of the year. So while we would like to keep the dates for the work session and public forum schedule intact, we may have to make some adjustments as to which specific articles are in focus on those dates. And on this slide, we're looking at the draft public forum schedule, and again, with the caveat that there may be adjustments to the specific articles in focus on these dates. And here's the draft timeline for what the dates for the comment period would look like. So we request that the B O C C direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the proposed text amendments, direct staff to proceed with the zoning ordinance proposed public adoption schedule as presented or with the O C C amendment, and for the first public comment period to open on May 10th.
Any questions, comments?
So if you open the comment period on May 10th, how long is it open?
So it would be distributed on May 10th, the articles that are listed, and go back one more, I think. one more, I think. Then we would have a public forum, excuse me, in June, along with one of the work sessions. So, it's, we're giving them about a month, I believe, each time we roll out a section, then we collect those comments, take them to one of the joint sessions with the Commissioners and the Planning Commission, discuss those comments, and make any changes, and then while we're rolling out the next section. So, it would be like on a rolling basis.
So, you're going to issue, you want to open public comments May 10th, which is tomorrow?
Yes.
But you haven't had any public discussion on that section yet?
No, we're releasing those articles for the public to review, and then we would have a session to talk about that before we meet with the Commissioners and the Planning Commission. But we also have open office hours. So, while you're reviewing it, if you have questions, certainly the public can call us at any time. We can talk through those questions, and then they can submit their comments in writing by email.
And I understand, and I think that if my memory serves me right, the comment that we have gotten in the past is that they like to have group discussions. You know, they, if I call you, you and I have a discussion about my issue.
Right.
Somebody else may not have thought of that issue and may have a different opinion. That's why they like to have open public discussions about the topics and the issues that are raised by citizens so that everybody gets to hear what the issue is, and maybe there are solutions out there that we haven't thought of that somebody else, you get where I'm going?
Sure, I do.
It just seems aggressive.
It's a little bit different than the comprehensive plan and the master plans, whereas we're getting input on what are your goals, what are your visions, how should we? And this is, that's already been established. We're writing the regulations to meet those goals and visions now. So, I, you know, that's why we're giving, and I do believe we're adding one in November because we're going to bump the forest conservation to the end of the year. So, we've realigned this a little bit based on what happened yesterday in Annapolis. But I do believe we're going to have ample time to talk in a public forum, at the work sessions, and then ultimately, there's a whole public hearing process at the end of this.
Because as I mentioned that night, you know, the comprehensive plan is a vision.
Right.
The zoning ordinance is the bifocals, where you get down to what's actually going to happen on the ground based on the vision, and it's much more technical than the comprehensive plan.
It is.
Because how long have you already been working on the rewrite?
Several years.
Yeah.
Following the comprehensive plan process and then the updates, and so, yeah, it's been, but we think we have a really good, solid document.
Until you release it to the public. I know that you think you've got it exactly right.
No.
Until we release it to the public and they get to see what it says and how it's going to impact their lives.
Sure.
And their vision of Calvert County, it becomes a whole new document. And my, my new commissioners tell me that I'm tainted already, that government just, it just doesn't move that fast. And this is aggressive.
It is, absolutely. And if it turns out that it's just not working, we'll adjust. It's not set in stone, it's fluid.
I understand that, but you, you at one point asked us to not accept any more text amendments until this is complete. And my concern is if we make that decision, we've locked the door for longer than six months, and there may be items come up that have to be addressed. I can't wait. Because while you think you're going to be done in January or February of '24, I'm not as optimistic, I'm sorry. I'm not as optimistic, and I am concerned about the delay in making changes that may be needed.
So, so that's my concern also, Mary Beth, that.
Sure.
We need to go forward, but to consider stopping and the text amendments and what have you, if it can get done by February '24, I'm okay.
If we set a date.
But as we know, with just what happened in Annapolis, that's going to add March, April, May, summertime, and that's where I'm not okay with suspending the text and map amendments, you know? We, we may need to address something earlier in the springtime, and that's what I'm not okay with.
That's understandable, certainly.
I think you need to come up with a date. I'm okay with it, but there needs to be an end date on it.
That's really hard to do, Commissioner Arlen, because until this thing gets released out to the whole world, and we have, give them ample time, adequate time to respond back, and then address what they, what staff may have missed, or, you know, it's hard to say, yep, February of '24, we're going to be all done, and for six months, maybe we can hold off on a text amendment, but there may be a text amendment arise that has an impact that we just can't wait. And this thing could drag out until June, July.
So.
The Town Center scheduling, remember that? It's going to all be done in like a year and a half.
I know.
How comfortable are you with this schedule? Have you done this before at this aggressive pace?
We actually are using what was done in 2006 to adopt the zoning ordinance, which was a major rewrite at that time, and they were successful. So, that's why we tried to mirror it as much as possible and hoping for their success. So, I mean, I would absolutely be supportive of a time period in which we didn't, maybe not the whole, but if we'd say, okay, we're not going to, and actually, in full disclosure, we have a few text amendments coming forward. We're giving them due process because, you know, we need a public hearing to make this change, so those will be coming forward to you. We wouldn't want to do any more after that while we're going through this process for a certain period of time. We could set a time limit on it, and, but if we don't do that, I can assure you, we're going to add a year to that if we're going to continue doing text amendments because it's the same staff working, and I only have limited staff.
But the majority of the project will be completed with the exception of, I guess, the unknowns with, at the state level, by what date?
I believe we have a public hearing tentatively on our schedule in the March-April timeframe of next year. And you don't have to make the decision today. We're just looking for guidance so that we can have the public hearing, and you can be thinking about if you are willing to support the text amendment, what, what deadline you would, if you'd want to put four months on it, six months on it, whatever you feel appropriate.
So, I want you to move forward. Yeah, we.
Thank you.
We definitely don't want you to hold back.
Okay.
You know, our struggle, or my struggle, or whoever's struggle, is that when we shut that door, something's going to pop up. You know, invariably, it always does. Whenever you say, oh, yeah, we'd be good, something always comes up, and I don't want to legally tie our hands, Mr. County Attorney, that we don't have, and maybe we do have that flexibility, even if we do shut the door, that there's always a key.
Certainly, I think for today's purposes, Mary Beth's asking to go forward.
Oh, yeah.
A public hearing, scheduling a public hearing so that map and text amendments would be suspended until a date certain. That date doesn't have to be set today, and the caveats don't have to be carved out today to do that.
Okay.
And maybe it's not the issue I think that it is, you know? But I just know how these things go sometimes, and Mr. Estes is sitting there, and he probably hadn't seen this document yet.
Not yet.
I'm sure he's going to have comments.
As much as you all gave me.
So, anyway, if today you're just looking for guidance to move forward, yes.
Yes.
I think that, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think everybody wants you to start moving forward as best you can. And we want to make sure that the public has every opportunity to comment and work through those, and I said, process-wise, as open as that process can be, we want it to be, because you and I having a discussion is not like this room full of people having that same discussion.
True. Yeah, and I do want to encourage anyone watching to please, our, our phone lines are open, you can email us, you can call us, you can come into the office, we're willing to meet and talk about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all you need from us today?
That's all. Do we need a motion?
We had prepared a motion, but if there's general consensus to move forward with the schedule, and of course, be respectful of the public's interest to extend any hearings, and if there needs to be more discussion on maps, we'll be flexible with the schedule.
Yes.
That's a great timeline.
Thank you.
Here, we applaud you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution in 1986 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy of that is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and are required to do so in advance. The floor has been opened for public comment from persons in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone, then those joining virtually. All speakers are asked to identify themselves, whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group. For those attending virtually, you may press star nine if you dialed in, or use the raise your hand function. Virtual speakers will be identified by the last four digits of your number or your screen name.
Good morning. Lynn Robinson, speaking as an individual, giving context to the ongoing Running Hair dispute, a dispute that goes back to 2018, COVID era, when they were hosting drive-in movies and campouts. County received complaints about the large public events, investigated, the site inspection showed that there were buildings that had not been permitted. A month later, in September of 2020, they were cited, rightly so, for the violations. In October of 2020, Running Hair began submitting paperwork to correct those violations. So, I understand that they have worked closely, hand in hand with the county, for two years to resolve them, back and forth collaboratively with both sides in good faith. All was well, they were allowed to remain open as long as they worked in good faith. Last year, I believe the Health Department said they needed, after a decade almost of operation, permanent restrooms. Also okay, because while all attention moved from permitting to public restrooms, they were still allowed to remain open while they worked in good faith. What changed? The board. As I understand it, it is this board that has voted to not let them stay open while they worked in good faith. It's this board that voted to move the hospice fundraisers, no fundraisers can take place despite the fact that they donate the, the space. It is this board that is not keeping the, the employees in mind, young professionals and teachers who earn hundreds of dollars in a weekend to supplement their incomes. And it is this board that is voting punitively. So, I ask, again, please consider the collateral impact of your choice to close Running Hair. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Wilson. I live in North Beach, and I'm speaking as an individual. It appears from what I'm hearing and reading that Running Hair has actually complied with the, most of the, with most of the county requirements, and we're finally down to some paperwork and approval that appears to relate to these restrooms. Yet they're still closed. They've missed their opening weekend, they've missed Easter, not them, but also the customers, as I stated last week, Mother's Day, prime warm weather season, jeopardizing their ability to assemble even higher a summer workforce at this point, as well as giving the community the opportunities for employment. And the hospice thing, I mean, seriously, I, it baffles me how in the world you could stop the hospice event. It just, it feels, it feels vindictive, like you're missing the point of the greater good for the community, not just for our entertainment, but now you're impacting one of the largest nonprofits in the county. And by turning down the hospice event, it's last minute, and I feel like it hurts hospice more than it's hurting Running Hair, they're donating the space. And I, from what I understand, they were told or had the impression that they were allowed to hold the event. I don't see this, how this is serving the county. We vote for our county officials that we believe can get things done. We elect our county officials for good problem-solving, and we elect them to serve the community. And to, by closing Running Hair, not letting them stay open while you're working through the issues, denying the hospice fundraiser, none of those appear to me to be benefiting the community. And, you know, perception, as a public official, perception is what matters come Election Day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm still nervous from last week. Ilana Vinagorn. So, I, I came last week, and as I mentioned, that I was new to the county.
Ma'am, can you please state your name?
Oh, sure, Ilana Vinagorn. I'm sorry, I thought I did. Okay.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. First off, I will share, I'm a cancer survivor, so I was very pleased to, to hear the early, early content of the meeting, and then to jump to see that hospice, something that's near and dear to me, that I support, for whatever reason, from coming last week to this week, that it would not be in our county, sorry, it would not be at Running Hair where it was planned for. That's very distressing to me. And however the decision was made, whoever is responsible, very, very sad that of all organizations have hospice, those, to, to deal with what they deal with, to have, to have them scrambling, and Running Hair can't support it, is, is very, very sad for me. Thank you.
My name is Kim Kane, and I'm representing just myself as a citizen of Calvert County, also coming here to discuss Running Hair Vineyard. Three things that I wanted to talk about, again, the hospice event being put off this year, or denied that they can, they can host it. It's been hosted for eight years, including the last two years when the county issues were going on, and it was allowed on good faith. Another issue I have is I understand that it's Business Appreciation Week, and I looked at the list of businesses, and it did not see one agritourism business on that list. I thought that was a little bit concerning. And the last thing I'd like to say is that it does seem like there may be some conflict of interest with the Board of County Commissioners having, maybe should recuse themselves from voting on some of these things when it comes to Running Hair Vineyard with their personally-owned businesses, maybe indirectly or directly affecting how they would vote. Thank you.
Good morning. John McGuffin from Prince Truitt. How many of you have been to a wedding at Running Hair Vineyard? Okay? Very beautiful place. Do you know that it's not listed on the county's economic development page as a wedding venue? Do you know we have a beer and wine trail listed on the site as well? And do you know that Running Hair Vineyard is not listed there either? Why? Because they have ongoing runarounds with permits and inspections? Seriously? But I bet you didn't know that the county is using Running Hair Vineyard on their own economic development website with a picture of a lady pouring wine in the opening introductory economic development page. Hypocritical, I would say. This is just rude. Now, I'm at least a 10th-generation member of this community. I'm a Bowen descendant. My family has lived in the area of the vineyard for over 100 years, and many relatives are buried right down the street in Asbury Cemetery. There were junk cars and tobacco fields on that property when Judge Bowen owned it, and Mike Scarborough turned it into one of the most beautiful vineyards in the state of Maryland. He has donated the use of the building for many fine charities and even political events. Dave McDowell for Sheriff, Pets with Disabilities, United Way, and most certainly, Calvert Hospice. And you folks voted to not allow this year's hospice event. Why? Because it was a public event compared to a private event? It's time to stop the madness. Do you know the only difference between last year and this year? It's you. This new Board of Commissioners. Running Hair has completed many of the things on the list. You allow them to have weddings, but you don't even list them in your literature. You're preventing them from donating their space and beautiful facilities for the hospice event. Can you believe this? The hospice, which has helped and touched many of us in this room. Planning and zoning says it's inspections of permits, they say it's you, you say it's them. Stop pointing the finger and open the vineyard. Commissioners, you're in charge. I'm asking you to vote right now, put it on your agenda, open the fundraiser for hospice, and open the vineyard for Mother's Day. Our mothers deserve it.
Thank you, sir. Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you, sir. Please, open the vineyard.
There are no more speakers. Well, then walk up to the microphone, please.
So, I'm Bob Estes. I'm only representing myself. And Commissioner Hans, I liked your idea of potentially having a, a more public idea of potentially having a more public group to discuss the ordinances. I know planning and zoning feels that they have interpreted the comprehensive plan, but quite frankly, it's clearly going to be their interpretation in their environment, and not necessarily one that reflects the county. For instance, you all got something from Keep Calver Country that shows the amount of, you know, development that could potentially happen under this ordinance. I guarantee you, that isn't what the community wants. You already know that. And lastly, an idea came to mind. Planning and zoning has offered us one-on-one comment sections, so we could go talk to them. How about a small group? How about a group of citizens, say, three, four, five? Could they come? Just an idea. Maybe keep it in mind. That's all. No, that's all I have.
Still no one online. Very good.
Thank you.
So before we do Commissioner Reports, I want to say a few things about Running Hair. So first of all, it is not true. This board has not taken any votes to close, open, change the rules, or do anything to Running Hair. I don't know who put that out.
Can they have the fundraiser Friday night?
They cannot have the fundraiser Friday night.
Why not?
This is not a debate between you and I, Mr. McGuffin.
You said that you didn't vote on that.
John, just let him finish, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
But when I spoke...
Just wait, John. Let him finish. All right, like you said, it's not a debate. You had your turn. He's taking his turn.
Can then I have a turn?
John, you spoke. He's going to speak, and he's going to tell you some facts, and that's the end of it.
So this issue, as you all have said, has been going on since 2018. And there are zoning violations at the property that we've been trying to address since 2018. The property that Running Hair is located on is in a land preservation program that has rules and regulations that they have to follow. Part of those rules and regulations are that they can only hold two public events per year. The preservation program is to protect property. It's an agricultural program, and those rules and requirements need to be followed, because maybe not the current owners, but at some point in time, property owners were paid to put that property in protection. That's the issue with the fundraiser. And the fundraiser for hospice has not been canceled. The fundraiser for hospice has been moved to Huntington Fire Department. The hospice fundraiser's been on the books at Running Hair for however long. Running Hair never contacted hospice and told them that they had issues and they might not be able to host the event until last Thursday. And at that time, they still didn't notify hospice that they had this issue, that they couldn't hold a public event. And all we've asked, and for those years, the only thing we've asked for them is to address their issues. And people have said, well, then just let them operate. Let them keep going. And we have, and there's been little to no progress made in those years. And so we have rules and regulations that have to be met. I know nobody likes the rules and regulations until there's an impact. And those rules and regulations are in place to protect public safety. And all we've asked is that they follow the rules, just like 99% of the other businesses in Calver County. That's all we've asked. That's all. And if you want us to look the other way, then I don't know where that stops, once you start just looking the other way. And I think in staff's, you know, opinion, they've given them three years to address their issues. Three years to address their issues. So whatever we had to do, staff had to do to get them into compliance is what we have to do. What does that say to the other 99% of businesses out there that are operating fully compliant? I mean, if you took your vehicle to a repair shop and they didn't repair your vehicle for three years, what would you do? You know, and I understand that you all were concerned about their closing and their not being able to host these events, but, you know, as was stated, they can hold all the private events they want. It's just the rules and regulations of being in a preservation program that they have to follow. And they have to meet the zoning requirements. Nothing's different than three years ago. It's just at some point in time, you have to draw a line and say, you know, you need to get into compliance, because there have been many, many times where they've been told, you need to address these issues. And they say, well, we're going to, but they haven't. And so at a point in time, you have to say, then you can't operate until you get into compliance. Otherwise, it just drags out forever. And so that's the issue with Running Hair. All right? So then we're going to go to Commissioner Reports. Excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. President. So let me make it clear right now. There's nobody working any harder on Running Hair than myself. I just got off the phone with Matt and MDE. There's nobody working harder. Two weeks ago, down there at the plan. Today, they're meeting with MDE. I'm on it. Trust me. We are all working hard. We all want this resolved today. It's going to take some time, but we are working on it. Back to my report. Today is crazy sock day for the rest of us. So I have my golf socks on, so I'm going to upset the pickleball and tennis community today, but I love my golfing.
There's always next week.
There's always next week. So Friday, I attended the Calverton Spring Concert. Mr. Jamie Hine up there is doing a great job up there. Also, on Friday night, with President Hans, we attended Corrections Session 69 graduation. Also, on Saturday, myself and Commissioner Grasso attended the 18th Annual Inspiration Walk with Calver County Special Olympics over in North Beach. Also went by Touch Truck in Huntington High School, very well attended. And it was also my grandson's first birthday on Saturday. Sunday, attended the Wine Gardner fundraiser at Huntington High School. Please keep in your prayers this week, the Wood family and the Rife family, for passing family members. And also, I would like to shout out to all mothers out there this weekend. Have a safe and happy Mother's Day to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Arlen?
Well, Friday, I attended a tour of Jefferson Patterson Park. I spent a lot of time in the park in the past, but had no idea what they actually had in the MECLAB there. And I guess the highlight for me was Blackbeard ship was found sunk somewhere off of Beaufort. And the beams and a lot of the pieces of construction from that are in a dehydrator in the MECLAB. There's a bottle of cannons, and there's neat, actually artifacts from all over the country get shipped to Jefferson Patterson Park, to that MECLAB for restoration. So that was kind of a different change, something I didn't know we actually had here in our county. Yesterday, I went to Calver Systems. They had 20 years of anniversary government contractor. They're located behind the Play Park, across from Cherry Lane. Like I said, it was a women-owned business, started as a women-owned business. They have 120 some employees. I forget over how many states, but they're all throughout the country. Great staff. It was very nice talking to them, and honored them for their anniversary. Also went to Edward Jones yesterday in Prince Frederick, their new office, for ribbon cutting ceremony. There's five gentlemen that pulled together from various Edward Jones companies or companies throughout the county, which are actually 19. I had no idea. Edward Jones had that many offices here in the county, but they pulled together and informed they're in office. And like I said, it was nice seeing that new business there. It's actually located between Wine Gardner and Fox Run Shopping Center. Mr. Smith, who came in to receive the proclamation this morning, again, he's a U.S. Coast Guard auxiliary guy. He's been there for years and years. Great guy. They will help you with boat inspections, make sure your life jackets, safety equipment, everything's in order. And as the proclamation said, the majority of fatalities on the water happened because of poor planning. I'm going to talk about tennis courts, pickleball courts, real quick. We received numerous, numerous emails, numerous phone calls. We've attended numerous meetings. A lot of your tennis players play pickleball back and forth. Commissioner Cox and I have had several meetings, entertained a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls. We had a plan at Halloween Point Park to try to go 50-50, in my thought, on the tennis and pickleball courts, which, if we did so, would stop the tennis players from being able to have tournaments at Halloween Point Park under a lighting court. Therefore, we're not doing that. The pickleball players still have access to those courts. They're temporary courts, but we're putting something in the works for the pickleball community, so there will be permanent courts at Halloween Point. It's in infancy stages, but we're going to try to move forward as hard as we can with it, just to get those pickleball courts there, and hopefully, we're looking at into July, August timeframe of actually having the first sole pickleball courts in the county at Halloween Point Park. So we're working on that. Again, I attended the pickleball tournament that Parks and Rec put on there. I think they had 190 participants in it, and that's just one of several. And I realize the need is there on both sides. It's a balance. I'm not a pickleball player. I'm not a tennis player. We've learned a lot through emails, through meetings, through phone calls, and we're trying to do what we can to reach that balance. And that's all I... Oh, one more thing. I support hospice 100%. 100%. All right?
Annette?
Well, I know Catherine does. Everybody on this board does. So hospice is not the issue here, guys. And we need to get that off the table, so to speak. We really do. Okay? Hospice is not the issue. We're going to do everything we can for hospice, and we have done everything we can for hospice, and you need to know that.
Thank you, Commissioner Arlen. Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I'm just gonna... Not good. Keep my mouth shut. But, you know, everybody up here's been touched by hospice. Okay. My pop-up was there. My uncle was there. Okay, so please, let's not go down that road. I personally donated, and I don't announce things like that. I do, because it's immaterial. I do what I do in those things because it's what I feel like I should do. And nobody on this board wants to see anybody unsuccessful. I've been part of this thing for a long time. I remember sitting down with people from there, and no one has to believe me. It's fine. Okay? You really don't. Okay? You're not getting my integrity for $48,000 a year or a boat or any of those kind of things. I sat down with the representative from there, and I will leave their name out of it. I listened to everything they had to say. I said, okay, I'm going to send my county administrator, the public works person, my planning and zoning person, and someone there to take, and our county attorney, to take notes of everything. And you know what they said to me, "Mr. Commissioner, you're not the first time someone's asked us to happen." But we're going to go ahead and do it again. And we've gone several and several and several times. Okay? Trust me, I want it resolved. Okay? Just as they do, and everybody else does. Nobody wants to see anybody not doing well. But you cannot have a rule for one person and not the other. In no way, shape, or form can you ever say, well, it's okay for you, but it's not okay for that one. Things will get fixed. They will get fixed. But you have to be fair. You know, in a small town, and John McGuffin understands a small town, if I looked the other way for somebody that I knew or went to school with, I'd be looking this way my entire political career. So I tell everybody this. I don't care what your name is, how much money you have. The only thing I can go by is the rules that are on the book. I will never break the law, and I will never go against the rules. Are rules antiquated or need to be fixed? Absolutely. You heard a discussion about just that very thing with the new text that was zoning and everything like that. But there's no ill will coming from this board or evilness, no matter what perception is. And trust me, there's a lot that can be said, but we will let this play out. I believe there's good intentions on both sides, and hopefully, that will prevail out of there. But you cannot ever look left or right. I'm going to die in this town, and I'm not going to avoid anybody because I say, well, you know, you treated that one this way, but when it came to me, you treated me different. I'm just not going to do that. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm always going to be honest to that, and I just don't know how to be another way. I'm sorry. So with that said, I was at Company 368 banquet. It was different. It was cool. It was like a roast. So poor Terry, who emceed it, they roasted him the whole time, having every award, everything, from the video show. It was truly entertaining. It was a very fun banquet. So that, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Commissioner Grasso had an engagement she had to leave for. Friday night, I attended their graduation ceremony for the correctional officers. We had three graduate out of the class. Want to congratulate them on graduating and also thank them for their service. Working at the correctional facility is not an easy job. You know, it's not like an officer who's out on the street and riding around. They're just like inmates for their shift. They're locked in that building, and they're there to protect and serve and maintain the safety of those inmates. So we want to thank those individuals for stepping up and choosing that as a career. I also attended the CTA Career Center signing on Friday, where I forget how many students that day had already signed up for jobs. There was probably 30 or 40 have already got jobs lined up the day they graduate out of high school. You know, I don't think we do enough to promote the Career Center and careers. You know, we talk a lot about kids going to college. Not every child, you know, wants to go to college. And there are a lot of career opportunities out here where you don't have to go to college. A lot of those children are going to leave high school in June and start a career. They won't have any college debt, and there's lots and lots of opportunities. So it was great to be there at that event, to see those kids that have already made good choices in their lives at such an early age. And that was all the events I attended over the weekend. Like I said earlier, we've, this has been going on for three years, and at some point in time, we just need resolution. And I think that, as Commissioner Cox says, we've all tried to work and figure out a way to get the compliance done, and I think we're still on that path. And so we're going to get there. That's all I have. Commissioner Hart, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. I move we recess to executive session pursuant to General provisions, Article Section 3-305B8, to consult with staff regarding pending or potential litigation.
Second. I have motion in second. Are we going to executive session? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a great day.